One, this is.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's all right, Tyler. Thank you. No, I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30. This is the January 20th, 2022 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining via video and teleconference, which is everyone because we are not at Borough Hall. Borough Hall is closed and we are all joining from either our offices or homes or wherever via video teleconference and via phone. I ask at this time that you please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be one opportunity during this meeting for public comment and then there'll be two more times during the regular session. We'll advise you at the appropriate time. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed if the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the December 30th, 2000, I'm sorry, the January 18th, 2022 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. Thank you very much. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
I am here.
Councilman O'Connell? Is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolcinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here, Michelle. Thank you very much. Public comment, this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please indicate somehow to me so that we can give you your allotted three minutes. Anyone not seeing? Anyone will close the meeting at this time to the public, but we'll open again later. We are going to be going into closed session at this time. It's going to going to be brief. We're not going to be conducting any, any business. But we are going to go into closed session momentarily under attorney-client privilege slash negotiations exemption to discuss pending litigation in the clerk's office. So we are going to make a motion, go into closed session. Entertain, we're gonna have to, Michelle, we have a place. How are we gonna log on?
I emailed everyone the closed session Zoom information and also I put it in the calendar invite. If anybody needs me to send it right now, I can resend it.
Okay.
Right.
Great. So yeah, if you can send it, so it's at the top of mind or I can find it. But we'll go into closed session. We will discuss things in closed session and then we'll come out of closed session and we will come back and continue with the work session. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 22-68, which authorizes the governing body to enter into a closed session under attorney-client privilege slash negotiations exemption to discuss pending litigation in the clerk's office.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second.
Second, Lovasolo.
Thank you, Suzanne. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wolcinski?
Yes.
Great. So I anticipate no more than five minutes for, for, for closed session. So the, the time is now 7:30, 4:35. I anticipate we would be back by, by 7:40. All right. Thank you. So council is not going to leave this meeting and go on to closed session.
Bye bye.
Suzanne, Liz, Steve, Amy, Ray, Matt. Everyone here? Michelle, great. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. The time is now 7:53. And the work session has resumed. We'll continue with the public portion of our agenda. Agenda review, very, very light agenda. We had 13 resolutions on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about those?
No.
We're not seeing anyone. We can start with some committee reports. Liz, do you like to give your, your report?
Alrighty. So I'll start with water and pretty much all this information is included in the water update in the Allendale Happenings newsletter, which I think went out today. But Allendale submitted and as I shared at the last meeting, received approval from NJDEP for a temporary PFOS treatment permit for the New Street facility. And this is the first of several steps to implement temporary treatment. For really what we needed is for PFOA and PFOS, which are two two types of PFOS chemicals. And the physical implementation of this temporary PFOS treatment will be facilitated upon the close of the sale to SUEZ and we are hopeful prior to the end of 2022 for the temporary treatment. And I want to just ensure that, you know, everybody in the public, I know everybody on the council knows that the Allendale Water Committee, the mayor and the Borough Council, as well as SUEZ, you know, take the water quality very seriously and are making every effort to have this temporary treatment installed. The building of the permanent PFOS facility by SUEZ at the New Street location, you know, as long as everything closes the way we believe it will, will take about three to three and a half years. So PFOS compounds do continue to be detected. However, Allendale Water meets NJDEP water quality regulations through the end of 2021 and we'll be getting our next testing soon. And as far as the sale of the water system to SUEZ, SUEZ and Allendale continue to work on all the information necessary for the submission of the purchase agreement to the Board of Public Utilities and a late spring or early summer closing is still planned. SUEZ is expected to become part of Veolia officially in late January, so later this month. And Veolia, like SUEZ, is an international company that provides drinking water and sewer services. The New Jersey Board of Public Utilities has approved of the merger and they've set requirements about staff levels and expanding charitable giving as well as community programs. And documents on this is, are publicly available. But if anybody has any questions, they can certainly email me. As far as the sewer, Allendale does continue to have high sewage volume and therefore sewer is a large component of our taxes. So that's something that we will continue to be looking at in 2022 to see, you know, what we can do to reduce that. Other reminders, I just want to remind anybody in the community that's listening that the Bergen County Utility Authority has green machines available, which are composting units that you can have somewhere. They're, you know, closed in, they're great. They really cut down on the weight of garbage that you're putting out to the curb and it produces amazing soil. So while we're in winter, we might want to start to think about that. You know, now if people can go on to the Bergen County Utility Authority and you can find a link and you can order one and they sell it at cost, which is great. I also want to encourage people to start planning for the May 2022 plastic bag ban. New Jersey needs to go green and starting May 4th, New Jersey stores and restaurants, along with other places will be prohibited from providing single-use plastic carryout bags and they also cannot be purchased, the single-use ones. So people need to start practicing bringing in their own bags. So I think that's it. I participated in a couple of other exciting things that we had in town, but I'm going to assume that that will be a part of Mayor Bernstein's report.
Great. Thank you very much. We have three minutes. Who can do the report in three minutes?
I have a short one.
Okay, Amy, go, go ahead.
Um, we had our first admin finance and HR meeting this week. The main focus was to review the first go around of the budget. We are looking financially healthy, but we are still analyzing line by line and we're still reaching out to all the departments to, to button down their numbers. I had a meeting this week with Mayor Merrittis. He was Mayor Merrittis, as we all know, is the one who spearheaded our special needs housing. And he was contacted by Integrated Community Project, which is an arm of the state with regards to increasing the capacity of people with disabilities and barriers and help facilitate them to be fully integrated in their communities. And they were so impressed by Allendale. We were picked as a model to be interviewed because of all the forward thinking that we have done in this area and with our special needs community. And they did confirm that we were way ahead of our time with this integration of our special needs as well as our senior population into our community. So it was, it was a good meeting and we will be highlighted in one of the reports in the future. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. 7:59. So I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Second. Sasso.
Second, second, Steve Sasso. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Everyone stay put. We'll wait a minute. Eight o'clock. The time is now 8:00 PM. Eight o'clock. The time is now eight PM. This is the January 20th, 2022 regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining tonight via Zoom and teleconference and telephone. At this time, we ask the public present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for the public to be heard and we will let you know at the appropriate time. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
For in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building website. Published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the January 18th, 2022 sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. So Tyler, can you, you're, you're great Tyler. Thank you so much.
Hey, we had to do this last night too.
That's so great.
Down on you. You were, you were, you were two beats ahead of me. Thank you.
I have my flag ready too, by the way.
Great. If we can all please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which is standing one nation under one individual liberty and justice. Thank you Tyler for that. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
For our councilwoman Holman?
Yes, here.
Councilwoman Lova Solo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell? Absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilwoman Willsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Next, we open the meeting to the public for a public comment on agenda items only. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on agenda items? Not seeing anyone will close the meeting to the public. The consent agenda. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
Second, Lova Solo.
You, Amy. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
For our councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willsinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, let's go continue with our committee reports. Suzanne, would you like to give your committee report now?
I would love to. Yay.
You are you?
My first report. So the land use committee, we held our first meeting of the year yesterday. And as the new chair, I just want to thank Councilman Steve Sasso for his years of service formally chairing this committee and the knowledge that he continues to add to it. I really do appreciate it. We had a lot to discuss and we spent some time learning about 5G technology and what it's going to mean for a borough in the not-too-far distant, in the not-too-far future. So, so that was fascinating. I want to also add that I'm also part of the Green Team in Allendale, started many years ago by Councilwoman Willsinski. And it's a volunteer group of citizens chaired by Mark Savistano and we meet the first Tuesday of every month. And we just want to follow up on Councilwoman Holman's reminder about the plastic ban that goes into effect in May and just to remind our citizens to start planning ahead. And, you know, get your bags ready and realize that the retail stores and the supermarkets in town will not be providing plastic bags. What, single-use. Also want to say you can reach out to the Green Team with questions about recycling. Everything from styrofoam to electronics. Mark is currently collecting electronics personally. You can drop off at his home. So if you have any questions, reach out to the greenteam@alldewngreenteam@gmail.com.
Great. Thank you very much for that.
And download your recycle app.
Oh, and recycle coach, yeah.
That's, I have it. I can't remember what it's called.
Yeah.
Matt, would you like to give your report?
Absolutely. So public safety has been hopping since the beginning of the year. To date, we've sworn in our new police chief, who is, seems to be settling in quite nicely. We've sworn in the officers of the ambulance corps and the fire department. We had an 85th anniversary dinner celebrating Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps. And we had our first committee meeting the other night. During the committee meeting, Chief Bataro of AVAC reported all as well. However, they are in need of members who are able to respond to calls during the day. So we'll be having some more discussions in the near future to address that issue. They have a full contingent nights and weekends, but daytime is difficult. After that, Director Kissner and I met with Fire Chief Pollock and Assistant Chief Baez at the firehouse to discuss plans for the upcoming year and a few ongoing issues which we are addressing. The biggest being truck 941, which is currently out of service. Again, that's the ladder truck. You'll remember it has a problem with the tower on the ladder. The police department has taken delivery of a new 2021 Dodge Charger patrol vehicle and the Durango vehicle is now on the road. This evening, Police Officer Alex Helmer is speaking during a Zoom presentation hosted by Alumni and Recovery. It is entitled "An Evening of Gratitude for Bergen County Law Enforcement." Alumni and Recovery is a nonprofit organization composed of young adults who are now living in recovery and abstinent from all drugs and alcohol. Their mission is to provide a safe and reliable program to heighten awareness, hope and resources for local communities. And they've worked with our students at Northern Highlands in the past. Towards the end of our meeting the other night, I got to see the new weapons that the police department will be carrying. The current duty weapons purchased in 2012 experienced a number of malfunctions. So Sergeant Croppi contacted the manufacturer multiple times to express his displeasure with them and eventually got the manufacturer to agree to swap all of the weapons for brand-new upgraded models at no cost to the borough. So a big thank you to Sergeant Croppi for reaching out to Sig Sauer and for facilitating this. Sergeant Croppi is also the department's accreditation coordinator. He's been working on finalizing the application for mock assessment and subsequent final assessment, which is coming forthwith. Two new dispatches have been fully trained, now assigned to squads, asset to the department. Year-to-date fire calls are 21 EMS calls 52 and police record entries and calls for service 872 so far. And finally, Police Chief Dylan asked me to remind everyone the towns in the area are experiencing a continued increase in car thefts. Residents should continue to be vigilant by locking their cars when parked overnight. And in collaboration with John Gill, the police department will be organizing a social media initiative to remind residents the importance of protecting their property against criminals. That's all I got.
Great. That was a lot. Thank you very much for all of your work.
Thank you.
Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you. So with the new year comes a new committee and I'm happy to rejoin the facilities parks and recreation committee. I was on it a few years back and I'm back as chair, working with Councilwoman Willsinski, which I'm happy to do. So with snow on the ground and everything, you know, there's not a lot to do right now and also our parks and our fields are in good hands with with Mr. Kissner. But Councilwoman Willsinski and I have been talking about things that are going on and a few of them that we're going to be updating with our software vendor, the admissions process to Crestwood. So we're going to be meeting with them again soon. We're also going to be updating, speaking of fields, our field use policy. And I'm happy to report that the last, or not the last, but the, it's not the last phase, but the most recent phase of the playground was completed before the weather really got bad. So that's all good news and that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. My mayor's report, some of the things have been covered. We did, we had a great weekend for the ambulance corps and the fire department. The ambulance corps celebrated their 85th anniversary with a wonderful event at Seasons on Saturday night. Huge turnout, a lot of, a lot of love in that room and they've done a great, a great service for Allendale and many, many, many more years. Happy to be a part of it. The next day on Sunday, I had the honor and privilege to swear in both the ambulance corps and the fire department. We did that last year during COVID. We gave them their own day in the firehouse and we did it again this year. And I also read a proclamation to Art Allsdorf, who has passed away, but he had a long illustrious career in Allendale. He was the fire chief. He had been in Allendale all of his life. Thirteen members, I think of his family showed up to accept the proclamation, including his wife. And that was a real honor and really happy to, to do that and on behalf of all of the mayor and council. Dog and cat licensing, all dogs and cats must be licensed for the year 2022. The deadline to register is the end of the month, so January 31st to avoid a $5 late fee, which goes into effect on February 1st. For those whose pets need it, we'll be hosting a free rabies clinic, three-year shots on Saturday, January 29th from 12 to 2 at the Red Barn in Crestwood. Dogs must be leased and cats must be in carriers. Social distancing protocols will be observed and please wear a mask. Dog and cat licenses will also be processed that day for those who need to register the pets. And applications can be completed online at our website, alldewgnj.gov.
Sorry, Ari, can you say the time again for the rabies clinic? It's Saturday, the 29th at the Red Barn from 12 to 2?
Yeah, I can. I'll do it slowly. Saturday, January 29th, from 12 to 2 at the Red Barn at Crestwood Lake.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. I know a lot of people take, utilize that. I think I was there last, well, last year, whether, maybe it was at the ambulance corps, two years ago, the ambulance corps, but I know a lot of people come out and take advantage of that. So people should do that. The 2022 garbage and recycling newsletter was delivered to every home. It's also been posted online and all the dates have been loaded into our website's calendar, as well as the recycle coach app, which I love. I think on Sunday or Monday it comes up and it tells you everything. What, what's happened on the agenda for that week. Property taxes are due on February 1st, first with a grace period to the 10th. So do on February 1, grace period to 210. You can drop your check in a secure mail slot at Borough Hall. You can mail them through the postal service or you can pay online on our website, alldewgnj.gov. We are, as you know, Borough Hall is closed due to the uptick of the coronavirus and Omicron, et cetera. But it has been closed, but I, we are, I'm happy to announce that it will reopen on Monday, January 24th at nine o'clock. So thanks to our hardworking employees for keeping operations going and to the public for their understanding. And that is it for my mayor's report. Ray, our borough attorney, would you, would you like to report?
That can be very brief, Mayor. Working with Mr. Kissner on contract personnel, land use and property maintenance matters with Michelle and her office with respect to several pending Oprah requests. And I think Councilwoman Holman already addressed the the mainstay of the last two weeks, which is, you know, working with the SUEZ agreement and dotting i's and crossing t's on a, on a couple of fronts to get everything finalized. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Michelle, anything to report?
No, we're just busy processing dog and cat licenses and getting out the renewed insurance certificates and 2022 contracts. But I did just want to wish Tyler a happy belated birthday and it was yesterday. So happy birthday Tyler. I hope you had a great day.
And now it'll be in the minutes.
Right. That's right. Good. Happy birthday Tyler. Thank you, Michelle, for all of your work. I know Ron had a day that was nonstop. I don't know whether he was able to make it on. I don't believe so. And I did see, Lisa, are you on? Would you, anything to report?
Just that our new tax collector, Gina Whitmack, is working out wonderfully. And we're very pleased that she is there and keeping the tax office going.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Chief Dylan is here. I can see his screen and I know, thank you, Chief Dylan. I know you're here. I know Councilman O'Toole had, had stole, had stole all of your thunder in terms of all of his reports, but I wanted to acknowledge, I want to acknowledge and open it up to you if you had anything that you wanted to add.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now Councilman O'Toole mentioned everything perfectly. And I just want to thank the mayor and council for all our support. My first seventeen days in office has been very productive and I couldn't have done it without the support of everybody on this Zoom call. And I continue to lean on you for a lot of institutional knowledge, which is very important in my line of work. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. And I know we're, we're happy to have you here and I echo what Councilman O'Toole said. I was at the public safety meeting too and I thought, you know, it was comforting having you there and thank you for everything you've done in your 17 days.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. And now, public comments. So anyone from the, anyone from the public wish to, wish to be heard?
Mayor Mark Savistano, 22 breathing place.
Hi, Mark.
First, I just want to make mention, thank you for keeping yourselves safe and the staff at Borough Hall safe and and making the right call and a good impression on the public by keeping us all safe. I did want to ask Chief Dylan if he had any plans of having public meetings where we could express concerns directly with him and the police department, something like they used to hold in the past. I believe it was called Coffee with a Cop. It could be either Zoom for now or, you know, periodically having meetings in person.
Sure. Okay, chime in, Mr. Mayor.
Please do.
All right. Thank you. I guess, Mark, we're looking to revamp a lot of those community initiatives that we had. Coffee with the Cop was very popular and I thought it was a very important point to make that we're accessible more to anything else. You know, sometimes people are hesitant to call the police, but we want to be there for you, our residents, when you need us or if you have questions. So I'm going to make a concerted effort to be a part of this group as well during the monthly council minutes, excuse me, council meetings. But I'm always available. You always stop by and see me. I would love to touch base with you, see what your concerns are. And that goes for any Allendale resident. And I'm here for you guys. It's your department as much as it's mine. So I'm here to help, definitely.
Yeah, I, I think those informal meetings are important and a good venue for people to express concerns.
I did feel like that people had the general impression that we are approachable when, you know, we're in a coffee shop rather than the police department. And sometimes I think the uniform kind of dissuades people from coming up to us, but you know, definitely I would like to be more involved and have the department and our officers be well-known in the community.
Thank you for that. Mayor, I did have one other question if I may.
Certainly.
This is something that I brought up back in 2017, believe it or not, continues to, to vex me as a problem that I reported and had numerous discussions with Steve Sasso about yourself and Mayor Merrittis, like in regards to a sidewalk in my neighborhood that is getting ever more dangerous. My initial request was to find out who was responsible for repairing that sidewalk. And there was some discussion about the borough being responsible because the shade tree was planted there. I don't think I ever got definitive answer on that. But I did bring it up to John Gill's attention and I submitted a report that way. And I noticed in the December newsletter that there's a specific mention of the fact that if a sidewalk is disrupted by a shade tree, then it's the responsibility of the borough. But I went to the borough code where it points to that link and in fact- But I went to the Borough Code where it points to that link. And in fact, there is no mention whatsoever of the borough being responsible. So since I originally brought this to the borough's attention in 2017 and it hasn't been addressed, I I'm getting frustrated as to how to have this taken care of and to get a definitive answer of who exactly is responsible for that sidewalk.
So so Mark, what I would suggest is that, Ray, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I think why don't we take the issue and then, Ray, we can figure out which department to best have it, address it, and then we can get back to to Mark.
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to ask, Mark, you mentioned you gave something or a report to John Gill. When was that done? So I can get a copy of that.
Well, I did in November and again in January. I asked John to follow up for me and and find out what the status or the disposition of that was. And he he said he didn't have an answer yet. So.
Okay, I'll I'll follow up with with John. I'll get a copy of that. And as the mayor said, we'll follow up on it.
Okay, and as important, Mr. Wiss and Mayor, I really would like to know what the the status of that issue is, if in fact shade trees are an exception or if it's always the responsibility of the homeowner. Because as I mentioned in the newsletter, it specifically states that if you take a moment to read the December newsletter, you'll see the mention. And that would be confusing to residents and how to take care of the issue.
Okay, and you, Mark, you're indicating that the the link that's referred to in the newsletter does not show what the newsletter appears to represent?
When you go to the link, there's no mention at all about an exception to the rule.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Certainly, great. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved, Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Hi.
Great, everyone. Thank you so much. Tyler, thanks for helping make this seamless. And then everyone, that concludes our meeting.
My pleasure. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night all.
Bye.